Hi Charlie.
Hey, good evening.
Hey Charlie.
Good evening and good evening Mayor and Commissioners and Melody and Jeff and whoever else is there.
We have a great time.
Matt and Nick.
Yeah, the protesters will join us later and.
Yeah, they're just down the street.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I was saying, I was wondering.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey Jeff.
Good evening.
Hey Charlie, you got a little bit of time for me in the late morning or early afternoon tomorrow?
Yes.
Perfect.
I'll make time.
Any preference?
No, no preference.
All right, we'll, we'll try to catch up with you then in the late morning.
Sounds good.
Melody, can you hear me? You can?
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right.
So yeah.
Can't hear you now.
Oh, it's on. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, all right. Well, I was having trouble getting my audio on.
Okay, gotcha. Well, it's working now.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
So happy.
Hi Brenda. Keep that hand in the plane, you know.
She has a headband on.
Can't hear you.
If you really knew, you're live right now, so.
It's still a bad hair day. Not a bad hair day, so.
My wife has a cap that says that, baseball cap, and diamonds, bad hair day.
I wanted to wear one, but you know, I thought I shouldn't. Okay, what time is it? I'll be back.
6:24.
Okay.
Just missing Tracy, right?
Right.
How is the audio feed from this here in this room? Is it echoey? Is it clear?
It's clear.
Okay.
Hey Tracy.
Hello.
Hi Tracy.
Hey Tracy.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening Tracy.
Hi Tracy.
Three minutes. Which side do you want to look at? Where it used to stand. Used to be in here.
We can't see the looking glass, can we? We can't see the looking glass. Okay, it looks like it is 6:30 and I want to welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Waxahau. Regular meeting, virtual meeting, June 23, 2020. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. But at first, I'd like to have the town clerk make a statement and do the roll call attendance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics with regards to the meeting. For those participants who may not be very familiar with Zoom. Your main controls are on the left-hand side of your screen. These are your audio and video controls. Just make sure to keep yourself muted when you're not talking and to always keep your video on. So that we can stream live to YouTube. And then with regards to the board member participation, the mayor will be calling on each board member individually. So just make sure to provide your comments and your votes. In that individual setting. If you would like to speak at any time, please make sure to raise your hand. Sometimes we might be in a presentation, just feel free to speak up if we don't see you immediately. Also, if you're raising your hands, just make sure you get it out there in front. We will recognize you. And if you do experience any technical difficulties, please make sure to text me so that we can suspend the discussion and just wait for you to rejoin. Next, we need to call the roll call. A call on each board member individually. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Okay, all members are present. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. This time, if we could all rise to do the pledge of allegiance and after that, if we remain standing for a moment, for a moment of silence. Wow, very good, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Okay, at this time, we've moved to item number three on A is motion to adopt the agenda or if any changes. Do I have a motion, please? Wait, Commissioner Maury made the motion to approve. Roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Very good, we have the agenda set as published. Next drop down to the public meetings, any items on this agenda. There's no one signed up to speak at this time, am I correct at that, town clerk, surely?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you very much for that. So we'll move down to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good, unanimous, thank you very much. Tonight, there are no recognitions nor there are presentations and no items on the public hearing side. So we're going to immediately move down to old business. And the first item on old business is the adoption of the fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021 budget. And Town Manager Jeff Wells, you have the floor, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening Commissioners. And we'll see if I got control here. Very good, okay, so we are in the final home stretch of our budgeting process for this budget year. And you've heard the 45-minute presentation at the Budget Workshop in May. And you've heard the 15- to 20-minute presentation at your public hearing back on June 9. So I will give a very brief but very just high-level overview for the benefit. Mainly of anybody that may be listening or watching out there that's not up to speed with where we are in the budgeting process now. But to some very high-level notes about this budget, the property tax would remain the same at 38 and a half cents. That's no change from the current budget that we were about to finish up in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Our main revenue source is our property taxes. We do have concerns with our other revenue sources, however. Those would be sales tax, franchise fees, permitting fees, rental fees. So because of that, we have to make sure that our revenue expectations are conservative in this upcoming budget. What's that, that's causing us to do is what I'm calling primarily an operational budget. Meaning that we're making sure that we're keeping up our service levels, we're making sure that we're paying our bills. But we're not really doing a lot of capital improvement projects at this point, at least within the budget. And we're not doing a lot of capital expenditures on equipment and things of, of that sorts to be able to make sure that, that we're saving money and not spending too much in this uncertain time. So this is how the overall budget looks this year. The current budget year we're about to finish up is at 15.5 million is what was budgeted. For 2021, we're budgeting 13.5 million, so that is approximately a $2 million reduction in the budget. With roughly half of that being in the general fund. This year wrapping up was at 11.8 million and we are budgeting that at 10.9 million for this, this upcoming budget year. And again, as I've mentioned before, we will, as we get closer to the end of the calendar year, we will reassess all this. And we'll be monitoring it every month, but then we'll do a, a thorough review of it at the end of the calendar year and see if there's any adjustments that we need to make either up or down based on how our revenue streams are going at that time. So our timeline for adoption, we had our public hearing on June 9. That was two weeks ago. The 24-hour comment period came and went. We received no comments in that time period. So here we are today at June 23 for the budget adoption. Your staff recommendation is approval of the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget. And also the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget ordinance. So I would just request that whoever makes the motion to make sure that you not only recommend approval of the budget, but also the budget ordinance as well. And with that, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, of course, thank the mayor and the Board of Commissioners for all their support during this process. And just want to glowingly talk about your staff as well and how much of a pleasant experience it's been. Even though we've had to reduce costs, they've taken it very much in stride and it was a very collaborative process. I'm very proud of everybody. And thus getting to the finish line on this and we'll be ready to do it again in about six months. Thank you. Sorry, I unmute myself. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, at this point, then I see none. I'd like to have a motion, please. And again, in that motion, whatever it is, make sure that we state the ordinance number, please. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as well as the budget amendment ordinance number 202006.
Very good, so the motion is up to approve the budget and fiscal year and the budget ordinance 202006. Do we have any discussion? Seeing that there are no hands raised for discussion, roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good, unanimous, thank you very much. And thank you, town manager. And it's a great effort by everybody. It's, it's impressive. It's impressive that everybody contributed, that we all got involved early. We had lots of discussions on it, so very appreciative. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move over to the adoption of the amendment for, in the fire prevention code ordinance. We've got Fire Marshal Kevin Starnes sitting in the wings up somewhere there. Kevin, your floor is yours.
Okay, hello everyone. How's everybody doing tonight? So, so from the, the last meeting, we went over the, this, this presentation and I'll kind of briefly go back over it. So the fire code for the trying to get back on here. Okay, so these are the proposed changes I had. So a little bit of background again, the fire prevention code from, from 2007 and revised in 2018 was basically just, just the adoption of the, the town adopting the North Carolina fire code. That's, that's all that's, that's in the, the ordinance now. We also have a lockbox ordinance that was established in 2007. And also an open burning ordinance that was amended in 2010. And the lockbox ordinance and the open burning ordinance were in a, in two different places. In the, in the full code of ordinances. So my amendments were to repeal and adopt the fire prevention code for the town as it, as it stands now. With the lockbox ordinance and open burning ordinance and add those sections into that, into the, into the fire prevention code ordinance. And update, update the language on the lockbox ordinance and the open burning ordinance and in doing so, the it makes the I'll get the next page here. It's basically, it's streamlining both or all three codes together. I'm having a little bit of trouble with my computer. So one thing I did, I listened to some of your questions that you had and some comments on the, the first presentation that I had. And one of the changes that you'll see, we moved the fire code ordinance from chapter 14, which is the building code ordinance for the town. We moved it and broke it away from that and created a, a new ordinance and new section to create its own, our own fire prevention code, which is going to be chapter 16. So that can now be expanded and added to as the, a full fire prevention code for the town. We also, under section M for open burning, we we took your comments that you had and your questions and we, under the first exception, we, we made the exception three by three by three for the, the size of the fire itself. So not just the, the container that the fire's in. And I can't get this, I can't get it to, oh, there we go, okay. Oh, it went fast. So I, we've gone through the, through the, the 24-hour comments and my presentation last time, or last meeting. So I just asked that you make a motion to adopt the code with these changes as they are.
Very good. Thank you for that, Kevin. Any questions from the board? Okay, being that I see there are no questions, if I could have a motion, please, relative to this ordinance?
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance 202007 to amend the fire prevention code.
Very good, so you have before you to adopt the ordinance. May I have any discussion on it, please? Being there's none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good, unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin, for all that work through that. That's a lot of revisions, a lot of comments from us. I know we probably drove you a little bit crazy, but we really appreciate having the time and the spend with you and the input. So appreciate that very much and good luck going forward.
Well, thank you very much and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for, for adopting this ordinance and look forward for future, maybe future amendments and ordinances. Appreciate it, thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, there's no new business for tonight. Move down to the general public comments. I understand that is one that might need a little explanation, so I'm going to turn it over to the town clerk, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have one general comment from Maurice Lowry at 7514 Sunbonnet Lane in Waxahau. And this comment is pertaining to road construction. The comment is Sunbonnet Lane needs to be worked on. The road needs repairs, including new gravel. The ditches need to be cleaned out and potholes need to be filled in. And that's the end of the comment. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Very good. And just a comment along that line, too, again, making sure that when we do these public comments, that they're relative to an item you know, general public business. So with that, we'll move down to the town leadership reports. I'm going to go back over to our town manager, Mr. Wells. Floor is yours again. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So just a couple of quick things. First off, for July 13 will be our scheduled time for the county commissioners, union county commissioners to consider our request for extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ. And that'll be for the properties that we've requested that are identified as donut holes. And we will begin the, the process of presenting to them and, and take their questions and then see where this leads. And secondly, we are very close to unveiling our new what our new zoning code, our land development code, the proposed code on our website, along with the, the maps, the future land use map, as well as our new zoning map. We expect to have that live probably right after the holiday. So I am going to attempt to share my screen and give you a peek at that. Or it looks like Nick's got it. Thank you, Nick. So we'll have a little intro here and let's see if I can do a little bit of scrolling. Oh, perfect. So we have a little intro to, to the page here talking about as the region grows, Waxahau. So we have a little intro to, to the page here, talking about as the region grows, Waxaw is faced with increasing challenges. And we've got a link to our Future Land Use Map, our proposed zoning map, as well as the Collaborative Growth Strategy booklet, that basically gives an overview of our growth strategy and where we are to this point. We have what our 2016 Future Land Use Plan shows, and the update here to the right, that we, we hope to abide by in the near future, as well as our existing zoning map, and how it compares to our proposed new zoning map. And just a few little points, main points about some notable changes in the zoning map. And then my favorite slide here, the 17 zoning districts that will be reduced down to eight base zoning districts, so think this is a very, very telling slide, and and one of the things we're trying to do is simplify this ordinance, and I think this really shows, shows that very well. And then last but not least, another link for the wonderful booklet that Haven Creative did for us, the Collaborative Growth Strategy booklet, which is a summary document of where we are to this point. And then we'll have each chapter hyperlinked here at the bottom for people to, to look at, and that will be once we have this document back in, in formatting, which, which you as the board will receive first, and then, like I said, we expect this to go live probably in a, in a couple of weeks or, or so, and we've begun working with the planning board on the document, and we are looking to get a meeting time with the BOA, a Board of Adjustment, we'll be working with them as well over the next few months, and hope to work with the Board of Commissioners this fall, with still the anticipated completion date being of winter 2021. And we also hope that once, if, and once the gathering restrictions do, do ease up, we will have our public input sessions like we did last fall. We plan to do some open house sessions, probably two, like we did before, that people can come in and interact with us, look at the new maps, look at the Future Land Use Plan, take a look at the property, and then we'll also, of course, take comments from online as well. So we're really excited about where we are in this, in this process, and we're, we're ramping up, trying to get into the home stretch of it, so just wanted to make you aware of where we are and where we are going moving forward in the near future. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, that's, that's really good news, I mean, we've really come a long way, Jeff, and a lot of credit to you and your teams putting together, I mean, we're we're reaching a couple of very monumental achievements here with the ETJ and the website, or the LDC itself, so you know, congratulations to successfully bringing this forward. We've been here, what, just a little over a year now, and by the time we get to the other end of this, we'll probably be at a year and a half, that's, that's quite an achievement, so thank you, and to the entire staff for all of that cooperative effort, it's going to be a good day here, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else for the Town Manager, for many of the Commissioners, before we move on to Parks and Rec? Dina, it's your turn, unmute yourself, you're in good shape, it's, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
There we go. Good evening, I'm going to give you a heads up on what's been going on with Park and Rec, and going on this week, and then future projects, and where we're at on the phasing of reopening. Last week, I wanted to give out some major kudos to the staff and our residents. We had a great week with going out in nature, having campouts. So the picture of the campsite with the little girls, they are our grand prize winners. They did this beautiful little campout in their living room, and so they were awesome enough to share that with us. We also made smores last week, and Miss Amy and Mr. Nick did a wonderful job at doing our virtual tour of the Suspension Bridge and the trail going to it. It had over 9,000 likes on that video, so major kudos to the team on that. With that, we had a couple of families that went on the trail after seeing the video, and you'll see the little girls on the Suspension Bridge. That's after they saw it and found it, and so they shared the video, their pictures with us that weekend, so I just want major kudos to the team. And also, you know, we have to really rethink recreation right now, but it's still happening, and so we appreciate that. This week, we are taking a photo contest on your quarantine time, so funny pictures that you've had, you've gone through the last couple months, we would love to see them and share with the citizens. So get those in by Friday. We're also doing backyard games, ice painting to cool off, and then cool activities for the family as well. So all those things are happening this week. As, as you know, we are, we do our best to partner with local businesses and artisans, farmers, chefs. This helps us stick with our mission and vision. And so we're loving more input from our citizen base, our businesses. Please come and join us for future programming and events. So definitely get in touch with the team here, and we would love to partner with you. And just a heads up on that partnering, we are partnering with the American Red Cross, they're coming out to Nesbit on Monday from 10:00 to 2:00 with the Bloodmobile to do, to, to have that activity there, so, you know, that's a very much needed thing right now for our, for us as a state to, to give back, so please join us. Our phasing of reentering back to what our new normal is, we are still in Phase 2. We got the word today that the governor's going to do another announcement tomorrow, so we'll have more information about what our next phase is when it comes to Park and Rec, but we still would, can, we're still implementing the play responsible, so that's not going to change right now, to make sure that we're being safe outside and inside. As you know, we're working on our new signage for the park system, so Haven Creative is helping us a great deal with that. And we just went through our last proof today, so we're excited, and so we'll have our rules up. We also have locational signs for the trail system, and we're really excited to bring this foundation piece to the park system. Also, wanted to give out some major kudos, we had a team effort to get a tent downtown at the Community Corner, and that was a lot of whole, different department staffs making this work, and we had such a wonderful response from the citizens of providing such a great space for them to, for overflow for our businesses downtown. And as always, I'll leave you with our vision and mission, having professional park system to give that health and wellness to our citizens, but also providing that quality recreation, even if it's virtual right now. So we are hoping to be together soon in a physical aspect, but we will continue to do virtually to meet that need for our citizens. Any questions? He's muted.
Let me go one more time, I put it twice. Any questions from any of the board? Dina, it's been, it's been a great thing to watch this develop over the last few months, and certainly with the culmination of even just the, I guess you want to call it the simplicity of the tent down there, but it gets nothing but rave reviews and a great place to gather, so thank you for everybody who's participated in getting that thing vertical there. It's been a nice welcome sight, given all the things that we're going through these days. So appreciate that. Any other questions for Parks and Rec, any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll just move on to the next step. Thank you, Dina, appreciate it a lot, thank you. All right, this time we move down to any comments or thoughts on the Board of Commissioners, do I see any hands out there this time around? Wow, we are going for the record, oh, we got Mr. Pedro Morey, Commissioner Morey.
I just wanted to thank all the town staff who have been, you know, working behind the scenes and working from home and getting things done. And he started bringing some folks back into the Town Hall, I think it's a great thing, and I just want to thank everybody for all the effort that they put in and you know, everything that they, they had to endure. But it was a team effort, and I'm glad everybody's back, and I'm glad everybody's safe and healthy.
Very good, thank you for that, you're right, it is, it is quite an effort, and the amount of teamwork that we've all seen through this whole entire episode that we're going through since, well, probably since January, we had the flood, and then E. coli in the water, and then the virus and all the other things we have to deal with. Very, very humbled by the amount of effort that's gone in by everybody there, so appreciate that, thank you, Commissioner Morey. Any other comments? Town Attorney Charlie, any comments from your side?
No report, no comments, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Town Clerk Shuler, real quick?
I don't have any comments, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. All right, if there are no other comments, we have nothing to talk about tonight on closed session, so with this, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, roll call vote, please, because we have to go through it this way, Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Westlock?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, everyone, that's, we're accomplishing a great deal these days, and I really do appreciate all the effort that everybody's put through. All of you guys have stepped up your roles, and it's really appreciated back, get good cooperative comment from the staff relative to our involvement with them. The interaction is just wonderful to see, so thank you all for being live action. And with that, we're gone. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.